That's been okay.
Wonderful.
Well, we really appreciate it. I mean, I know other communities in West Virginia have implemented or brought on that those and they have done.
Yeah, I think it could really be just because most of the people who come to these events, they're kind of passionate about it. And also, they're also kind of a group, um, group about it. But I I'm from law enforcement, so I think that helped a lot.
You wish to.
Yeah, I worked in prisons for twenty years, so so I didn't.
Because, yeah.
Yeah, it's been amazing.
Okay, okay.
So. That's probably where you're going from there.
Oh, is it? A little restoration for you too.
Yeah, I probably didn't, I I only took two weeks off after I retired. And I thought, you know, I'm just doing my part, it's okay now. Uh, I'm starting on three.
Just like it's for.
Yeah.
Two weeks, come on.
Two weeks, two, two, two.
From that place is just, that place is crazy.
I. Hello.
Hi.
Better run a tight ship tonight. The A team is here.
Who?
The A team. To do the video.
Uh, yeah, I'll try to keep the noise down over here.
Actually, they couldn't make a sound, so hey, get in there.
Good to have you.
Well. I've been here the last one if it wasn't for Senator Justice.
Uh, you had to run that one?
No, he made, he made, uh, Monday the my third holiday. Moved you guys back right on top of my school board, first of all.
Oh, you covered the school board too?
Yeah, yeah. So I couldn't make it to either one. Then I thought, all right, I've got three this month.
You're making up for it?
Well, I thought, well, if the first one's on the first or second, but then they said, no, there's no meeting until fifteen, because there has to be two weeks between.
What can you do?
One meeting the next or something like that.
Wow. Wow.
Well, I got this one and the next one.
Well.
Haven't actually.
We'll keep you busy.
Do the best I can.
You do fabulous, Danny.
Yeah, if she hadn't have told me, I'd have been down here on the first.
Really?
Fifteenth, because that would have been the first.
Hey, why didn't you say anything?
Geez.
You're getting all close-ups tonight, really slow, but I'm gonna put captions under it.
You're gonna zoom in?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm gonna put captions under it here. That sign doesn't show up as well as the other ones on this camera.
Yeah, it doesn't pop, does it?
Yeah, real light.
It's kind of pale.
It does, you barely, if I, in that camera, actually, I need a pair of sunglasses on it. Or be able to turn it hours down, I can't even do it downstairs, um, because it's too bright. Overall, if I try to think of something here, it's way too bright. You know, I mean, ours needs to stall down a couple times, but I can't even do it. There.
Well, we might be able to get into that like so. I'll do it.
Just give me the remote for it, let me have a, you know, I'll get into the venue, turn it down a bit, and the rest of them fine. So I have to keep it up high to keep more light into it, light, to darken down.
Should have done something to outline those.
Yeah, not on the, what it was good.
Yeah, close, yeah. Outline their, their lean, maybe lag.
I'll tell you what, it looks good.
Yeah. Give it a thin line.
It looks good on the, on the screen panel though.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it looks great on the.
Danny, should we shut this off, because it doesn't, it's making it long at long?
I don't.
Or not?
I don't know, you use a panelist one, I'm gonna use off.
Just leave it like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They might be doing something to it.
Oh, okay. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
This here. And it's a little bit darker than Morgantown as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, it's a little washed out. That word, outline is in black.
Oh, yeah, that looks nice.
Yeah.
Oh, probably because of all that green. You know, I mean, the green bottom.
Well, the Morgantown, Morgantown pops out, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Everything does, everything green pops out.
A little darker, a little darker.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well.
I blame it on you, so.
Everything else is.
Okay, okay, so you can take one more then, right?
Hey.
All right.
Hey.
I tried blaming it on Christine, she wasn't having it.
Yeah, well, I don't blame her.
No, she said no.
She just says, give it to him.
Yeah.
Verbatim.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
Uh, geez. Okay.
I think you guys got a lot of new visitors, hopefully they aren't gonna be long and drawn out, it's like five or six.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's pretty, pretty.
Now, I didn't see the end of the first couple of meetings, Joe, it's just deputy.
He stayed down there.
Okay.
Last time, did he?
Yeah, yeah, that's where.
I'm sorry?
Joe, Joe stayed down, did he?
Joe, Joe sit there. Now, does that change when it goes past? It goes from you to Christine to Ryan, and then it either goes here or there.
Yes, same.
Same, just right around or right around?
Same.
Whichever way she decides to. Me and her.
Gotcha.
I always have to put, I have to put both on, so I can go to either of them. Because she's, she, she had been, she had been.
You need to join your toes sometimes.
Well, she had been regular, and then all of a sudden, she looked the other way, I went, oh, can you, uh, and, uh, you want to start with me? And I put them both just in case. Oh, I didn't see your chair going, I guess I do need another chair, I'm sorry.
We need one more.
Yeah, I've got one outside.
Does Joe have one over there? Did Joe have one?
Hey, hey, there you go. Oh, he doesn't know.
Joe, who seconded? Darren. Darren. Okay, Kurt. Okay.
Make you clean down this time.
I have better glasses, worse glasses. This is the city council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, two forty-three High Street. Uh, it's Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and it's about a little bit after ten, after seven. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she'd please call the roll.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Joe Bugonham.
Present.
Counselor Bill Kueckie.
Here.
Counselor Louise Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Counselor Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Counselor Dave Harshbarker.
Here.
Counselor Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Jenny Saleen.
Here.
Now, we're gonna all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know at what point in the meeting we recognize our new, uh, symbol and, uh, tagline and sign, but, um, I just would like to say appreciation for Drew and his team, um, for putting it together and working with, um, members of the public and members of city staff, uh, and council and working on it. So there it is. Uh, approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting minutes, and July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. How does council, does anybody have?
Accept.
Thank you.
I submitted a revision, I believe it's been taken care of.
Good.
Thank you.
So by acclamation?
Yes.
Revision? Okay. And now we're on to correspondence. Um, Morgantown Police Social Worker, Kelly Rice, L.I.C.S.W. That means licensed social worker. So if you wanted to come up here, and you would, if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and your role here, so that people are familiar with you and, um, just express our appreciation for taking this on as our first person in this role and working directly with the police department and directly with people who may need assistance, um, in the public.
Well, um, so I'm Kelly Rice. Um, I just recently retired from Federal Bureau Prisons in end of May. Um, I saw this as an opportunity, um, to work with law enforcement. So I applied for the position, um, probably didn't give myself enough time to recover from my other position, but, um, it's start, it's, we're developing exactly what this role looks like for me. Um, I think rate at this point, it seems to be, um, working with the population that seems to be that the opiate, affected by the opiate crisis, by the drug crisis, um, the mental health, uh, basically, I do a lot of patrols through downtown Morgantown. I think the police are finally comfortable with me doing that. Um, there was some concern about, uh, uh, my voice is always raspy, it always sounds like this.
Even so.
I'm sorry, but anyway, so there was some concern about safety, so we had to really get that worked out. Um, I, I did go on a call that got very dangerous, it was kind of, it was out of the ordinary, but it just couldn't, couldn't have gone worse, so, um, we hopefully have remedied that kind of thing. Um, I've gone out on a few calls since then, but it seems like. I've gone out on a few calls since then, but it seems like I work very closely with the peer community at Sober Living, and that's what we're trying to do. So I'm trying to be kind of a liaison in that kind of category. I attended crisis intervention training in Wheeling two weeks ago. So if it came, if I was in the department and there was a call, for instance, like a domestic violence call or something like that, that would be something that would be appropriate. But I think their concern is like getting the scene safe before I pop in. Because, and you know, I think it's just a comfort level. So it seems to be, we're finally getting where I think the officers were all kind of comfortable with one another. We're getting there. There's also, you know, how to track data and things like that. I'm reaching out to the social workers and there's a social worker at Martinsburg Police Department. I'm going to work, I'm going to, actually, we're on, we're going to call tomorrow and just, you know, try to compare what she does and her role and that kind of thing. And I've also been giving my card to a lot of the business owners just to introduce myself. Honestly, I mean, it was a little uncomfortable when I was first hired and there was all this stuff in the paper about, you know, the social worker and everything, and I was on Facebook, and I'm not on Facebook, and I was very reluctant. I didn't really, I would like to just, kind of just stay in the middle, but it's, that's not possible. But anyway, so, yeah, I mean, I hope I can bring something to it. It's a difficult population. It is. It's a difficult population. I kind of, you know, you get that kind of feeling. I'm old enough that I know it's not going to be overnight. I mean, and I have no, you know, you can't rescue people. They have to want certain things, but I think there's a lot of resources in Morgantown. So it's a matter of communication as well, like communicating about, you know, once, you know, the side with the addiction. The fentanyl has really just done a lot of damage. It's just very difficult to treat, and so is the methamphetamine in terms of recovery. So trying to talk them into going when they're kind of transient and walking around has been difficult. So I've been going up to where they, a lot of them eat during, at the Trinity Church, and I go up there with the peer, people from Sober Living, and we try to talk to the folks. Do you have any questions? Anybody? I mean, that's just kind of how my role is, but it's very fluid. Just like if, for instance, they start getting more calls in the evening, you know, my children are grown, I don't have any problem like altering my schedule just so I'm a little bit more available. I live in Fairmont, so.
Kelly, do they have you doing, are you going into encampments or going into, let's say, Wall Street alleyways?
Yes, yes.
So you're, okay.
Yeah, I've gone into quite a few encampments. And then I also have gone on some of the mushroom rounds.
Okay.
My son did that, and that's how I learned about that when he was in nursing school. So I try to do that, and I'm also going out with the Homeless Coalition on Thursday. So I'm trying to go out with different people to the encampments, not just with the police. When I go out with the police, we, I, it's when they're clearing it or they're telling them they're going to clear it, a lot of the folks, they don't want to talk to me, which, you know, is understandable.
I've noticed that Wall Street seems to get a lot of, in, between Wall Street and High Street and then Wall Street and Spruce Street, I've noticed a lot of gatherings there.
I think they gather when they're anticipating, I think, the, whenever they're getting their needle exchange, they gather there, I think.
Yeah.
They do gather there. I found an overdose person there. I had to call it in, so.
And you're accompanied by how many officers?
Well, I wasn't accompanied by anybody then, but I have a radio now. And so I was just walking to the red door, I call it the red door. I was walking up there, so it was like ten-thirty in the morning, and I was just checking on him. He was in a wheelchair and he had overdosed. So health right, you know, they were, they're obviously right there. They were able to give him an injection, but we give out a lot of Narcan.
Right. It's a hard job.
It is, and there's, I just, I don't know, you know? There's no easy fix, unfortunately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So we have some public hearings. Oh, is there any other correspondence? All right. We have some public hearings. The first one is an ordinance amending section thirteen twenty-nine, table thirteen thirty-one oh five oh one, and table thirteen sixty-five oh four oh one, as it relates to establishing a new firearms sales establishment's use in the planning and zoning code. So this is a public hearing just on this fireworks sales establishment's planning and zoning code. So we're going to open that up. If somebody wants to speak on it, they can.
Good evening. My name is Jody Hollingsett. This is Kate. I am the founder and organizer of Protect Morgantown, the community-led campaign that swiftly, and thank you, and effectively stopped Big Daddy Guns from opening in Morgantown this past year. I want to thank you, the council, for your time on this issue. I also want to thank the Planning Commission for voting unanimously to recommend this amendment to you, the council. Tonight, I want to point to our beloved community, the people who spent their entire summer last year doing everything they could to keep firearm sales out of our downtown, so close to schools, neighborhoods, churches, and our beloved downtown district where there's plenty of pedestrian traffic, WVU students, MHS students, and more. The people's work and commitment to the cause is evidence that this is a worthy and wanted change to our city's code. Big Daddy Guns was clearly an unwelcome addition to our downtown district, and through the fight last year, it became apparent that we need to enact city code to prevent something like this from happening in the future. Morgantown is enduring a lot of change right now. That's no secret. We need a win. What a wonderful victory it would be to make our city a safer, more welcoming, and inviting place to be by voting in favor of this amendment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, members of council. My name is Shay Straight. I've been agent and representative for Protect Morgantown and helping them through this process to guide them through. I'm a professional planner and hold a master's degree in architecture in small Appalachian revitalization and urban planning from Fairmont State University. So I just want to highlight a few things about this proposed amendment that you all are voting on this evening and how proud I am of the citizens who came out to participate with you all, the Planning Commission, and the city staff to work on something that they felt was important for their community. I believe this amendment here is a very reasonable amendment that accommodates all stakeholders. It still allows for a significant portion of prime real estate to be available to this proposed defined land use, especially in prominent commercial corridors that are more automobile-oriented development, where oftentimes these business uses are located anyhow. As well, it takes into consideration about both the actual safety and the perceived safety of the public, as well as an important aspect for the request for the change. And to look at this retail use in a different light. What this will hopefully help to do, if enacted, will take into account the fact of the commercial environment of downtown Morgantown, prominent location, especially with bars and other uses oriented to the college demographic. This demographic is often prone to more impulsive decision-making, sometimes for better or for worse. And with that, it may be beneficial to the community as a whole to help separate this use away from those businesses that are orientated to that demographic and which may also contribute to less rational decision-making should a worst-case scenario happen. So hopefully, by separating this out of downtown and also moving it away from residential areas, it'll increase the safety, the actual safety, for the residents and stakeholders and visitors of the city of Morgantown. As well, something that I've studied and I feel is very important is the perception of safety and talking about environmental psychology and what makes us feel safe in the environments that we are in. And I believe sometimes land uses have a role in that, and they make us feel a certain way. For instance, we might feel one way about a restaurant, but we feel differently about a pawn shop. Even if we allow them in the same location, they make us feel different. We feel different on a street with a sidewalk, but a street with a sidewalk that has landscaping and lights and active businesses next to it, rather than a busy four-lane road with nothing else around it, makes us feel different. And that's all very important to take into account. And I believe by locating these things away from residential neighborhoods and the commercial center of the community will help to kind of foster an environment that is perceived as more safe and more welcoming for all the stakeholders in the community, while also accommodating those commercial needs for those businesses as well. So I would graciously ask that you all hopefully vote in favor of this amendment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, John Whitmore, three four nine Granview Avenue. This is a pretty simple yes vote. The research backs it up, unfortunately. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I'll make sure everyone has an opportunity.
Is this for the public's part or just for this?
This is just for this item. You will have your opportunity. All right. So we're going to close this public hearing, and then we're going to move on to the next public hearing, an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023, 2024, annual budget of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the general fund. So we're going to open this public hearing on this item only. If anyone is wishing to speak on this. Just going to wait for a second. Then we're going to close this public hearing. Now, we're going to go on to the voting portion, so we're on unfinished business. Item A, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance amending section thirteen twenty-nine, table thirteen thirty-one point oh five, point oh one, and table thirteen sixty-five point oh four oh one, as it relates to establishing a new firearms sales establishment's use in the planning and zoning code. The first reading was seven eleven twenty-three, and this would be for Ryan and Ricky, our attorney and our planner.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, city manager Haas. Mr. Straight provided a great summary in terms of what the ordinance is pertaining to this evening. I would just clarify that the uses that would, that the new firearm sales establishment use will be permitted by conditional use permit, which requires BZI review and approval in a B-two district, and will be permitted by right in a B-five district. I'd also just like to commend members of the Planning Commission who had several workshops on this, and thank Protect Morgantown for working with us through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And then are there any comments, questions, concerns? We've gone through this a few times.
A few.
I've been through it several.
Is there anything that you wanted to say for your last hurrah on this one, or?
No, I'm thrilled that, and I'm sure, I speak for other members of the Planning Commission as well, that this has reached its final stage of approval. This is something that we've been working on for a year or more now, and as I said in July, when this came before council the first time, we were very strategic and very, we made sure to do our due diligence and look at lots of different options and think through a lot of different scenarios, and I think that we came up with something that makes a lot of sense for Morgantown now and into the future.
Effective and balanced. All right. Is there anything else? All right. If we could please have a vote? Yes. Joe Bugonham?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously, seven zero. Now, we're on to item B, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024, annual budget of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the general fund. And if we could ask our finance directors.
Good evening, council. Excuse me, sorry. This is the first revision, it's the required revision by the state auditor's office of the carryover or fund balance from last year to the new year. It's essentially taking any leftover monies not spent and allocating it into the new year. Spare you all the numbers since this is the second reading, but we'll take any questions that you may have.
So if we could have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. And then if there are any additional questions, our finance director. Well?
Thank you.
You must have done your job.
I would again like to go on record as saying that I would prefer more of the carryover from our civil service departments to be used for retention, recruitment, and sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses, things like that. That's money that was already, it's not adding to their budgets. It is keeping money that was already allocated in those budgets, in those departments that desperately need the assistance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? That has comments? Deputy Mayor Bugonham?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
No.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes five two. We're on to unfinished business. Item A, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance. Wait a minute. I'm on the wrong page. I, pardon me.
Public portion.
Courts and commissions, and we don't have any action on that today? Pardon me. Now, we are on to the public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution, and that is, someone who wishes to speak would come to the podium, would state their name and their address, and would take their allotted time, and keeping away from personal comments and keeping towards comments germane to city council and the city business. So first on here is Anthony Steak.
Good evening. Anthony Steak, one hundred Hartfield Road, Morgantown Firefighter. I've decided to come to this meeting to speak on a few issues that we are still having within the fire department. Some have been, for a while now, and a couple of new ones since the last time, myself and a couple of other firefighters have come to ask you guys for help. First off, the firefighters that take paid time off that they've earned are being financially penalized. Most employees, especially forty-hour employees, do not lose money when taking a day off. Firefighters stand to lose eighty to four hundred dollars a paycheck, depending on how many days and what day they take off. Second, the city is still incorrectly paying the fifty-six-hour firefighters for their holidays. As you know, most of the city has time off for their holidays. The firefighters do not. The city has elected to pay firefighters instead of giving time off. State code states if a firefighter has to work a legal holiday, they should be allowed equal time off, or the alternate shall be paid at a rate no less than one and a half, one and one half, one and one-half times his or her regular rate of pay. And so if I work the holiday, say, sixteen hours of my shift falls in the holiday, I get sixteen hours of regular pay. If the city chose to do equal time off, they would give me sixteen hours pay time off. Sixteen, working sixteen off. That's thirty-two, what I would call billable hours. Currently, the city is only paying us is only paying us time and a half for 16 hours, and we work. We do not get a day off, so that would be 24 billable hours. The city has also elected to pay firefighters two times the regular rate of pay for family holidays, including New Year's, Memorial Day, July 4th, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. This year, eight hours of my shift fell on July 4th. I was already in my overtime rate during those eight hours. The city bumped my pay up to two times, essentially adding point five onto my time and a half. We had firefighters that were not in overtime, and their pay got multiplied by two. Therefore, I was penalized because I'd already worked overtime or too many hours in that week. Also, we have a pay discrepancy amongst rank. We have two firefighters of the same rank who are hired eight months apart. With the new pay plan, line items have been removed, including master firefighter. Those two firefighters that are eight months apart make $3,500 pay difference. We also have two firefighters that are two years apart, and they get paid the same. This is not right. Lastly, we also have, it takes 20 years to vest in the firefighter pension, and under the current pay plan, 20 years you were capped out. You can't get any pay unless it's a COLA. There's no longevity, there's no step increase. Previously, with the line item of longevity, it extended all the way up to 30 years. So as soon as you vest, you're done. You're capped out here. I believe that is not right as well. I hope you guys will look into these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Tricia DiCenzo?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. Yeah, if you'd have her and then you're totally welcome to speak.
Hello. Good evening. Tricia DiCenzo. We'll start off with the positive. I'd like to thank Wheeze and Danielle and all the police. She's gone already. I saw her this afternoon down by, on High Street. But anyway, I want to thank all the police officers for their efforts. We are seeing more of a police presence on Wall Street, and we're feeling the effects of it, and we are very grateful and hope that it will continue. But next, I'm here because I do feel that there is a need for accountability for some of the social programs that are receiving funds and donations, but they seem to be producing little or no results. And I'm basically speaking about the harm reduction program at Health Right. I believe it's time for a very transparent cost benefit analysis of this program, and especially of the way it has been administered at Health Right. Harm reduction, basically the needle giveaway really only benefits or reduces harm in one population, which are active intravenous illegal drug users, which is a very specific group. The amount of homeless drug addicts that have moved into Morgantown has increased exponentially, and the magnet has been Health Right. It's been an endless cycle. This has directly imposed on the other people of downtown, whether you work or live here. It's been impossible to have ignored the change. Every city employee I know has been disgusted. The homeless drug addicts wandering the street, committing indiscriminate crimes, doing vandalism, are not here because they love Morgantown. They are here for coddling and normalizing of their drug addiction from so many different organizations here, starting with Health Right. One suggestion that we have for Health Right is to monitor the results by marking their needles and the other paraphernalia they give out. It would give an opportunity to quantify the impact that the needle exchange has. According to Health Right, they gave out 12,000 doses of Narcan in 2021. Is there any oversight as to who received all of this? From my research, the cost of a single dose of Narcan is between $22 and $60 a dose. That comes to a staggering $264,000 to $720,000 of a cost for one year. It's given out for free by Health Right, but who is really paying for it? And is such an availability just another encouragement to use, to continue drug use? Yes, it is great to save a life, and there is no dollar value for a human life, but we are talking about donations and funding that come from hardworking people who do put a value on their money because they earn it and they pay for their own bills and mortgages. So whose money is used to pay for these drug supplies? There seems to be no oversight, and especially since current financial records for Health Right and United Way are unavailable. Injecting drugs in public is illegal, but here in downtown, it has been acceptable. Health Right acknowledges and accepts that there is open drug use in their parking lots, but cites addiction as an excuse to break the law. By allowing open injection, it means that they have been supporting the trafficking of drugs and the dealers. They have been creating a market for the dealers by keeping their customers available. Again, this program is only designed to benefit a certain small group of people, and if it had been run well, none of us would have felt the devastation. The last element to truly do a cost benefit analysis would be for someone to factor in the huge financial and psychological burden that this has had on the residences and the business and property owners, from repairing vandalism, picking up garbage and needles, to being threatened by individuals who are carrying weapons, and not to mention the loss of revenue because people are afraid to be here. The town is hurting with college enrollment down and businesses and tenants moving out. If we are going to attract students and their families back, we need to create a vibrant downtown for locals and visitors both to enjoy. Morgantown is a beautiful city with a rich history. It should be a must for anyone coming to West Virginia. It's not too late to turn it around, but the bottom line is that drug addiction is a choice. The rest of us should not lose our livelihoods because a small group of people's bad choice. If Health Right can't administer harm reduction properly, then it doesn't belong in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Just John Whitmore, 349 Granville Avenue. I just wanted to thank for the comp plan meeting that occurred earlier. This was, I thought was really good. More meetings like that would be happening if you had more staff, so you all made some extra profit last year. You may think about increasing Ricky's staff, because then we'd be able to get more stuff done, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Since we're left with press and staff, I think we can close this one out. We don't have anything under the next couple of items unless someone can tell me about something. So now we are down to new business. The first item is consideration of approval of authorizing rules, authorizing the rules of council. And if we could ask our city attorney to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. The council meeting rules in front of you tonight are consolidation of various rules that city council has adopted for the conduct of its public meetings over time, as well as implementing rules under the Open Governmental Proceedings Act. These rules are intended to provide in one place the basic schedule of council meetings and committee of the whole meetings, how council will move its business items through those meetings, and how it will place items on the agenda, and then conduct its business at the meetings. These in general contain rules that council has followed for its meetings from various sources, but these are now in one place for ease of reference. And these are, these are council's rules, so they're up to you for action.
We've been talking about for a long time. So, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And then what sorts of comments, concerns, changes?
I was just wondering if maybe you just could summarize what you feel is the, are the differences in this proposed versus perhaps what we were following.
I think the first difference, historically, city council has required four council members to place an item on the agenda, while these rules would allow placement of an item on the agenda by three council members, as well as by the mayor or city manager, which has also historically been the case.
You could mention the, the use of these public, the use of the public hearings?
These rules provide rule sections for both the public comment portion of meetings and for public hearings. The, the public comment rules are the same as you use and recite to the public now. There's a time limit per speaker, but no total time limit. There's an option, but not a requirement to sign up for, for speaking, and there's a requirement to speak on public business, but no particular public business. The, the public hearing rules just reference that council sometimes has specific rules or reasons to conduct public hearings, for instance, on requests for exemption from the vacant structures code, or such as when you, when you act on petitions to amend the zoning code. But in the absence of specific hearing procedures that council has adopted for a particular type of public hearing, we will just follow the same rules as for the public comment portion.
So that would mean on this agenda, the separate public hearings would not necessarily occur? They would be folded into the public comment?
Keeping those, the, the placement of particular categories on the agenda is, is up to council, as it has been. You can, you could leave your agenda the same, or, or not keep those every time. I think often, often council has included a separate public hearing for the second reading of every ordinance, whereas you, you wouldn't specifically need to do that for every type of ordinance. You need to do that for ordinances that are adopted for the purpose of raising revenue, and some other particular ordinances, such as bond ordinances.
Okay. When it comes to public hearings, it's my understanding from reading these and based on what you just said, that we're now putting a time limit on this?
If you, if. Council conducts a public hearing and hasn't adopted any separate rules for that public hearing, then the same four-minute time limit per speaker would apply in the absence of council doing something else that, that applies for a public comment portion.
I think a public hearing is someone's last opportunity to make their case. The decisions that we make really affect people, and I'm not, in most, most cases, I'm not in favor of the time limit being the same as the public hearing. If someone's here staying on topic and saying something that they think we need to hear, I think we should be willing to listen.
I would agree. I think that those, the, the public hearings are limited in scope enough in terms of what topics can be discussed that we can then tell people that they're not being germane to the topic. So I, I would be in favor of removing those two. I think, given my experience with other, watching other public bodies kind of deliberate, I think that we're fairly brief in terms of our public comment. I don't want to jinx it. But, you know, at this time, considering what we've seen historically, I think that we would be safe to not impose a time limit on, on public hearings. It's only been a semi-issue a couple of times in my tenure, anyway, which could be different in your experience, Jenny.
You're comfortable with reasonableness?
I think as long as someone's staying on topic, and when they are no longer on topic, that is the point at which we can tell them to wrap it up or loop back around to.
Or very obviously filibustering.
Yeah.
How do other people feel about this?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree. Yeah, I would support that, Mayor.
So I guess in that spirit, I would move to amend that portion of the council rules to remove the time limit on public hearing.
And traditionally, that's been the case. I mean, I believe from the time that Triter had been.
I would second Brian's motion to amend.
So that this is not something new to us. And we've seen it abused by various people. We could name them. Some of them still alive. But it's worth hearing the public on these specific issues. I agree. I also like the four-minute rule.
So we're comfortable with 11 o'clock?
I'm afraid so.
11 o'clock, can we cut it off?
I don't know that that's written into that. Is that, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
The, these rules say that council intends to end its meetings no later than 11 p.m.
Thank you.
Intends to.
I didn't really.
So we have an amendment on the floor. We have had our first and seconds. We've had our discussion. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Then if the clerk would please call the roll.
On the amendment only.
Amendment. Deputy Mayor Bougonne?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Hmm. Maybe we need an interesting no there. No. So that amendment passes six to one, and now we can vote on the rules unless there's anything else anyone would like to offer.
Can we get an earlier closing time?
So on the one hand, we're going to get unlisted to the table, and on the other hand, we want to have an earlier closing time. We'll have to work on that.
Move to approve.
The only thing I would also move to amend is sections 4D and 5B. I would move to amend them to allow only two council members to bring forth things to the agenda. I just feel like having, you know, a person that brings forth an item and then a sponsor for that item, I can understand the kind of buy-in that you're trying to seek when you, when you get three people. It's still that same concern I think I expressed the last time this came before us with, of like trying to cajole almost a vote before with three. But I think three is reasonable, too. I would rather see it as two, but that's just me. So I would propose the amendment for that reason.
Is there a second on that one?
No.
Fails.
Just me.
Fails for lack of a second. We're, we're going to three. We're going to three, and sometime maybe we'll go to two. But right now, we're at three, apparently. So love the spirit of the amendment, and now we're to voting on the rules themselves, unless anyone else wants to offer something or ask any questions. All right.
Oh, I had a question.
Yes. No, here we are. That's what it's for.
There's no specific outlining of how agendas are constructed in, in here, other than, you know, kind of the basic, we need to have some sort of. Somewhere at some point in time as well, unless we think that's, you know, I could see us thinking that that may be too rigid of a way of us, like trying to form agendas. But I guess it has been expressed to me by people who are new to council or people who aren't exposed to council, that sometimes the way that we set our agendas or not, it's a little hazy as far as like what people, like I think we have a good understanding of how that process works, but perhaps not the public. And, you know, with, without it being written down, obviously that can change very drastically in the future. But yeah, I'm not proposing an amendment as a comment.
We can work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. It's my understanding that in the past, under different mayors, any member of council who wished to was able to attend an agenda setting meeting, and that is definitely not the case now. So I would like to, I, I agree with Councilor Butcher's sentiment on that.
Call a question.
Okay. Call a question on the rules.
Yeah.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Bougonne?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. The rules, um, pass and unanimously. And now we look forward to putting them into action. All right. So now we have our, um, consideration of approval of planning commission recommendation on petition to amend permitted uses in professional, residential, and office district to allow mixed-use dwelling, multifamily dwelling, and mixed-use building uses as conditional uses. So our director of developmental services.
Development Services. Yes.
Yes.
Hello.
Development Services. That's right. Thanks. Um, so the petition before council tonight would amend table thirteen thirty-one oh five oh one of the permitted land use table to allow for, um, mixed-use dwellings, multifamily dwellings, and mixed-use buildings to be permitted by conditional use permit in the professional, residential, and office district. After review, the planning commission made a motion that the proposed text amendments were consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and that the commission recommended an amendment by city council. That motion failed. And if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
So the question that I have is just explaining if we want to go along with the planning commission, what are our best words to use?
So that, I believe the way it's worded on your council agenda, petition to amend the permitted uses and so on and so forth would be to receive and file a motion to receive and file the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to receive and file recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes. All right.
That's a new wording to me.
Thank you. Yes, new wording to me too. Appreciate it. Accept and file. All right. Um, are there any questions for how this, what we're talking about here now this works?
I, I have a question, Mary.
Yes, please.
I think my understanding was that we were tabling it last time because of our new comprehensive plan and making sure that this fit with our comprehensive plan. And so my question is, are we voting to accept and file because we have not laid out the full comprehensive plan yet? Like, is this potentially going to come back to us once we have a better understanding if this will fit within the 2033 comprehensive plan?
Yeah. So it's not a move to table necessarily. It's actually to receive and file, and the planning commission's recommendation was to deny or basically to not move forward with the petitioner's application. But yes, it could be brought back, especially with the comprehensive plan adoption. I believe the way that, um, our language is in the code is that you, within a year timeframe, you're typically not allowed to bring back a new application for the same request. But given potential changes with the comprehensive plan update, I could see an application being brought back.
Thank you.
Might I add to that?
Yeah.
Um, prior to the meeting of the planning commission where we heard this case and denied, um, the planning commission had asked staff to reevaluate the P R O district in general. Um, so we were, we essentially denied this, waiting to see if, instead of changing the, based on one case, we wanted to reassess this zone as a whole.
Gotcha.
And that did not, the vote at the planning commission was not unanimous. I believe it was four to two with the members there at the time.
Correct.
Um, and we had some lively discussion about it. But we anticipate looking at the different permitted uses in the pro district, which is essentially supposed to be like a neighborhood buffer district, um, and reevaluating at that time.
Thank you.
So for right now, no changes?
That's what the planning commission recommended.
Yep.
Okay.
Just so we all know exactly what we're voting on. So does anyone else have questions? All right. If the clerk would call, call the roll?
We're voting to receive and file, right?
Receive and file.
Okay.
So a yes vote is making no changes.
Right.
Got it. And it's agreeing with the planning commission and allowing for changes later if someone so chooses to analyze it again. Okay. Deputy Mayor Joe Buggonom?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Item C, uh, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing and accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the runway extension phase three construction at Morgantown Municipal Airport. And if, uh, John Brable would come forward, our, uh, airport director.
Good evening, councilors. What I'd probably do is kind of give you a background of some of you weren't around when this whole project started. And let me give you a kind of a background of kind of where we are today, and then we can talk about the, the exact measures that are in front of us here. Um, so in 2019, I was hired by the city. And that same year, about two months after I was hired, we got clearance from the FAA, got concurrence on our benefit cost analysis, and also on the environmental assessment that was done. Uh, so both of those cleared. And then beginning of the year, in February of, of 2020, we received our first grant, uh, for the runway extension project, and that was for design. I received a grant of 1.7 million dollars. Um, at the beginning of 2021, we received our second grant for construction, and that came from supplemental funding from the FAA in the amount of 7.8 million dollars. And that's when we began our actual construction of the extension project. Uh, that same year, at the end of the year, we received our second grant for phase two construction. And, um, that, that was bid, awarded. We had a, we had an issue with the contractor that accepted the award. That, obviously that was during COVID and costs were, um, rising very quickly, particularly construction costs and, and fuel, if you remember. So that contractor wasn't able to abide by what they bid. Um, they had to hold their bid for six months. Um, and we had so many extraordinary changes in our economy at that point that we let them out of that. So we rebid it, and that was awarded, um, in 2022 with the construction that began early this year, back in February. Uh, that completed July fourth, right around the, the holiday. And we are now moving on to phase three. So, um, we do have a grant that's been awarded. It was announced by, um, Senator Manchin, uh, for 3.7 million dollars, which is item C on the agenda. Uh, so we're looking forward to moving forward with that and starting our next phase of construction. Uh, we, we refer to that as phase three. Uh, that will start, um, the, um, preparation of the next round of embankment. So really what, what this does, we do some more excavating, and we're preparing the area where we're doing our stream enclosure on the east side of the property, which is along Wolf Run Road and that, that vicinity. So it's near the properties that we acquired, um, towards the beginning of the project. Then the next item on your agenda is for environmental remediation. It'll be at 1.8 million dollars. That goes directly towards that stream mitigation project that I was talking about, where we're going to culvert the stream that's along Wolf Run Road, and also takes care of some of the remediation that we have to do with. So there's a couple, a couple of small wetlands on the property. One is actually at the top of the mountain, which is kind of odd. Um, and then we have one at the bottom that was created by us when a previous, um, construction project was done several years ago. Uh, so we're remediating both of those. And then, um, we also acquired some property, um, within the last two years. So the, the third item, uh, for $160,000 in a grant is also basically to pay us back for money that we've already spent forward. So the FAA is giving us a grant to, to take care of that, um, property we've already purchased for this project. So that kind of gives you an over, overview of everything. And, um, uh, so I'm really looking forward to the, you know, for item C, for the 3.7 million, uh, and getting this project started. Uh, we did bid the, the project in, in the spring. Um, it was a, it is, that's also on your agenda tonight, to award the contract to Mountaineer Infrastructure LLC. Um, we're looking forward to getting them started. So with the grant coming in a little bit early, usually we don't receive the grants until September. This one was able to come in early for us. So the contractor will probably be able to start earlier this year as well. We may actually get, um, if we get to start early, we may actually finish before year end, which would be a first. We haven't done, had, got to do that a long time because of the winter shutdowns. So looking forward to it.
Wow. So, um, why don't we have a motion on item C? And then if you'd stay here and people can then ask questions? Pardon?
Joe. Move to approve. Joe.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Um, we can sort of start with any questions people have on this item C. But if there are questions that kind of point to some of the overall project, um, feel free, we'll, we'll go through each item separately. But if, since we have our director right here, um, if you have any questions about this, um, this is your moment to ask.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
These are very, very exciting, um, numbers and exciting project to keep moving along. It's hard to work on such a huge project and keep it going and keep, um, keep your spirits up. So, um, very much appreciate, uh, all the work that's going into this and everything, um, from, uh, Danielle Trumbull and I going and talking to the FAA, um, people who we were not too sure whether they knew any more about the project than we did, because I think they were each new to their jobs, um, to talking to the, um, federal legislators, to, um, your work in the state and the manager and, um, is it Michael Baker?
Yes.
You have, you have a whole team.
We do, yes.
And a whole team at the airport as well.
The interesting thing about this whole project is it started right around 2006. And, um, you know, it took a long time. A lot of people put a lot of time and effort into this to get where we are today. So.
So started under Dan Boroff and has gone through many managers since.
It has, yes.
So, um, does anyone have any questions about any of this? Well, we'll start approving them then, I hope. We have, we have our first, um, motions. So on item C, uh, if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Buggonom?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Now onto item D, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the runway extension environmental remediation at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. I hope you got your phone calls.
Move to approve, Mayor. Second.
Yes. All right. And, um, does anybody have any other questions or comments? And if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Buggonom?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to item E, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the runway extension property acquisition phase three at the Morgantown Municipal Airport.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions?
Thank you.
This is one of those really, really great agendas where we're giving grant money to complete airport projects. So, um, if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Buggonom?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. And now we're going to put some of that money to work. Consideration of approval of a bid award of 2023 12 M G W 1836 extension construction phase three at the airport. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any questions about putting this money to work?
Just for clarification, especially for the public, can you explain again what phase three will entail?
Sure. So, um, phase one was our, I'll kind of, kind of go through the, the three phases. It'd be easier. Um, phase one entitled the initial earthwork where we started. And we started an embankment on the west side of the property near what we refer to as the trailer park that's over there. Um, that area, we, we, we filled in a very low spot and brought that up. That's going to be the future taxiway will be in that area. Uh, so we brought that area up about, well, total from, from the low spot to where it sits today, almost 100 feet already. Um, but when you look at the ground, if you're looking at level ground, it looks like it's about 70, 70 feet or so up. So it's come up quite a way. Phase two was primarily getting more durable rock. Uh, we need durable rock to put at the base of this big foundation we're building. You want the, the heaviest and strongest parts at the bottom, which of course are at the bottom of the mountain that we're trying to move. Um, so it makes it, um, a little bit of a, a jigsaw puzzle for us. And we're playing Tetris on where we're, we're storing different mounds of rock. Um, and then phase three, it takes some of that durable rock and starts placing it. And also it creates the area where we're going to enclose the stream. So that, uh, we're going to, we're kind of going to prep that area. Uh, the next phase will be the enclosure of the stream and then a lot of durable rock going on top of it.
How many phases do you anticipate?
Uh, well, with the way the funding cycles have been coming in, we're looking probably at seven phases now. We originally had planned it at five, um, but we're now, we're now up to seven. We're hoping it doesn't go any further than that. But, um, I, I did speak with one of the FAA administrators about a week or so ago. I was at the West Virginia Airport Managers Conference, and the gentleman that I spoke to was from, um, Washington, DC, and he was one of the folks that approved our BCA. It helped, helped bring it to fruition. So, uh, he's very supportive. Uh, he did tell me that they are really looking at trying to find funding for us to keep this project moving and, and not delay any further than it already has.
Yes.
That was, that was a good, a good conversation I had, and I hope he can, uh, keep that going for us.
Thank you for taking a moment to-
Sure.
-fill everyone in on the phases. Yeah. It's impressive. Can you, um, tell us a little bit about, um, the area, some of the area that you're taking the fill from is, is going to be the business park?
Correct. So the, um, the area we're pulling the fill is right along, um, Easton Hill Road, um, right there at the intersection of I-68. So it's going to be called the I-68 Commerce Park. Uh, it borders I-68 and Progress Drive, which is a city street that we built when the armory was, was moved and when the T-hangers were built. So, um, kind of sits in that area. As we clear that hilltop there and move it, that's where we're getting all of our rock from. As we clear that off and make it flat, that becomes the future I-68 Commerce Park. So that's, um, the MCDAs owns that land, and they're, they'll be the developer of that property. So as we are, that's what we're, we're working hand in hand with them to, to make this project come to fruition. And, um, and as we pull all the, everything we need out of it, all the rock and so forth we need from that area, it will create a, a nice economic generator for the community.
So an additional benefit?
An additional benefit, yes.
And people working together?
Yes.
Which we really appreciate.
All right. So we have done a motion? So we have done a motion and we could call for the roll unless anybody else has anything else. If you would call for the roll on that one.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. I guess that's all.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If you permit me, I, uh, John mentioned earlier that a lot of people have worked on this project for a long time. And, uh, just wanted, I, uh, kind of coming on the, on this side of, of all of that work, wanted to express appreciation to everybody, both volunteers and staff that have worked tirelessly to make this happen. This, this is no small feat, you know? And I've gone through this several times. Uh, but in particular, I wanted to express appreciation to John. He's not only managing an airport and trying to increase our employments. That in and itself is, is not, is, is a tough, tough thing to do in, in today's climate. And we're looking really pretty good there. But is, he's been the driver to, to keep this thing moving all the way through these phases. And I, I just wanted to express appreciation, John, and carrying those two hats and doing it extremely well. I, I really appreciate your efforts.
I appreciate that. But, um, Mayor, if, um, by May, I'd like to invite all of you out to the airport and have a, a meeting where we can talk. And I can kind of go through more and kind of explain what we're doing at the airport. Uh, what I'd like to do is maybe in a couple of weeks, have you come out? Uh, at that point, the checkpoint renovation will be done. So you can see where we've spent our money and see the improvement that we made and how it will help our, our customers as they process through the airport and get on their flights, so.
So a tour and an explanation?
A tour and an explanation. Now, I'll work with Christine and we can schedule something for you to come on out and visit.
Great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we have the Emily Moserelli part of the, part of the agenda. Consideration of approval of a bid award, 2024-01, First Street Relocation Project.
Uh, thank you, Mayor City Council. So, uh, what you have for consideration today is, uh, awarding the First Street project. Um, so the project consists of relocating First Street to create a four-way intersection with Beechhurst Avenue and Campus Drive. Uh, this will line up, uh, how they're relocating Campus Drive as part of the state's, uh, DOH project. Other improvements include the realignment and widening of Hall Street, which is the one that parallels the river. From Third Street to, all the way to the Reynolds Hall parking lot, uh, and replacement of the WVU parking lots, uh, that are on either side of the existing First Street. Uh, we actually partnered with WVU and WVU will actually be funding, uh, all of the portion that is, uh, their parking lot. It just made sense to do the two projects together. Um, this also includes construction of, uh, the sidewalks and curbing, uh, along First Street and on the upper side of Hall Street, uh, creation of ten rail trail parking spaces, which we have these, uh, in numerous places along, uh, the Capeport Trail and Deckers Creek Trail. Um, uh, all the pavement markings and drainage improvements. Uh, actually, if you see activity on there now, uh, MUB is working on, uh, some work and has already, uh, moved to that area to start work. Um, so, uh, we had actually a pretty big turnout, um, uh, that was interested in this project. We did receive, um, initially five bids. Uh, one was incomplete and one was late. Uh, so we were able to review three bids and the, uh, low bid on the project was to Parata Paving in the amount of $1,179,076. Um, and, uh, that is what the recommendation is to award that project.
Thank you. And, um, quit motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then if anyone has any questions about this project? Like, when will this occur?
Uh, this fall. Now. There is, um, so the, uh, top portion of the project, which is, uh, closest to Beechhurst Avenue, um, cannot, um, be finished until the state has moved from, right now, the, um, the lane that is closed on Beechhurst is closer to campus as opposed to the river. So we have to wait until that side is finished and they move the lane closure onto, um, site closer to the river, closer to our project to be able to actually finish that. So the very end of the project will have to coincide a little bit more closely.
So you'll be working kind of alongside where they're working while they've got the road closed?
Yes. And we've been working closely with them already. So the designer, uh, that designed this project is also the designer on the project for the state. So Stan Tech is the designer for both projects.
Oh.
So, very closely.
How clever.
Yes.
The construction company is the same?
The construction company is not the same. So I believe Bear Contracting is the one for the state. And, and this, if council should choose to award this, would be Parata.
Who we work with?
We work with Parata very frequently.
What was the budgeted amount for?
Um, so the engineer's estimate for this, uh, for both projects was probably closer to 1.3 million. So this actually came in a little under budget. Um, and I think the city's portion of that, um, is probably closer to like $950,000, give or take, I think about $200,000 of it is that WVU parking lot.
That's encouraging that things are coming in under estimates now. I noted that the engineer's estimate was present on the, on the list from the airport bids and they were all under that estimate as well.
Yes. The, um, some of the prices have stabilized a little bit unlike, uh, what we experienced a couple of years ago. So. Not quite gone to where we were before, uh, which would be nice, but at least stabilized and made it a little bit more predictable.
At least we're able to expect.
Yes.
Great. All right. Is there anything else? Do we do a motion? We did do a motion. Oh, good. If you would please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. We get to work. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, over the last number of years, we've had some difficulty in, in certain, with certain positions in the city in recruiting. And, uh, we tried all, all types of things, all the way from an advertisement kind of campaign to, uh, to just hitting the streets and, city, uh, administration in conjunction with an input from a variety of individuals, have developed an employee referral incentive program. We're wanting to, the, the intent of the, of the incentive program is to provide an incentive award to current employees who bring new talent to the city by referring applicants who are subsequently selected and successfully employed in, uh, hard-to-fill position within the city. We're hoping that, that what this does is help all of our employees engage in, they're, they're, they're probably our greatest asset in terms of, uh, recruitment. And, uh, we, I'm not sure we've done a, a real, real strong job in trying to solicit their help. But we feel like this, and once again, it's for hard-to-fill positions, not every position in the city. We felt that that wasn't fair to the city either. So it's, it's our intent to implement this, uh, incentive program to help encourage participation by city staff in the recruitment and retaining of, of good, strong, uh, employees within the city. Also, uh, just be aware that, well, let me start with this. I don't know how many of you have gotten caught in the traffic created by Willie Street construction. I mean, it, it, I knew it was going to impact the city, but I didn't know how widespread. I mean, we're talking, the entire city neighborhoods are impacted tremendously by, by the congestion that's created with that. Uh, as, whereas we're, we're glad that the work's being done. There are other streets I thought were, were really important too, that I hope they, they focus on. But what we'd like to encourage is, is, uh, for our, our citizens to consider. We've, we've identified three, three routes or detours that we feel are, 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 are good detours to take to help facilitate and dissipate that, that traffic in a more reasonable kind of way. Uh, it's, has been posted and, um, is related to the construction on Willie Street. There are three routes that we encourage. One is, the first one is Route Seven to Hartman Run Road. Uh, the second one is a route, is Route Seven to I-68 and the third is Beechhurst to Seven, uh, 705. Uh, we're, we're hoping that we encourage the use of these alternate routes while at the same time we, we encourage our, our citizens to, to try to not utilize residential areas for, through traffic. Uh, I think that would really help. They're just not sized to handle this higher capacity traffic flow. If you have any questions, you can, you can, uh, look that up. The, as an offshoot from that, uh, we received a call from Republic. They're having some major problems, uh, collecting. And what they've asked is that while the construction's going on, we, we grant them to be able to start earlier before the construction on the road starts, so they can get it done. We have two options that we're going to be, they're always going to be behind in collecting the, the trash or we allow for, uh, for a temporary, um, pass on the early morning restrictions that we placed in our contract. And I just wanted to bring that to, to council's attention. I'd appreciate your input on that. Shoot me some emails. Uh, we need to make a determination, see if we can work together with. I, I think Republic wants to get the job done. The problem is their hands are tied in some ways and I'm not sure how they work around the traffic. Also wanted to let you know that one of the CDBG, uh, as part of our CDBG grant programs within the city, uh, we support helping, uh, handing food boxes out. Uh, this is going to be done Saturday at 10 o'clock at Salvation Army and certainly any, that, any individuals who would love to participate in handing out, uh, food boxes that, uh, that these, the, the contents of these boxes were purchased through the CDBG grant program that, uh, Robin has, has applied for and, and is administering.
This happens at Hazel House of Hope?
It happens at Salvation Army.
Up there?
Yeah. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Sorry, just to clarify, Salvation Army on, at the Hazel House of Hope or?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, I just missed. Cause there's a location
Yes.
in the downtown and then there's a location right there. Can I ask a question on the Managers Report?
Sure.
Um, when you're talking employee bonuses or referrals, how do you, what metrics are you using to determine what is a hard-to-fill position?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
Um, when, when, when we, we go through a six-month period of time and just can't fill a position, I'll give you some examples. Uh, Police Department, uh, beginning police officers is a, it's a tough sell. Uh, we want to incentivize recruiting certified police officers, which gives a little, a little bump up in the incentive. We've had some difficulties at the airport, uh, recruiting, uh, over, and this has been over the last couple of years. And so, uh, I, I think that if, if we've given it a good effort for six, for a minimum of six months, it really is pretty discretionary. But if we're just not able to fill, we've, we've gone through two hiring cycles and just have not been able to get any real qualified applicants and filled, uh, filled the position, then that's, that's what would determine the use of that program.
Okay. So generally about six months?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's what it usually takes, uh, to, to run two cycles.
Good question. Pardon?
I also ask a question. What, uh, when you said Republic's asking about coming earlier, what is their version of early?
I'm sorry? What, how early?
What is early, yes.
I don't, I don't have a time. I think we can establish that, but I think we're going to have to be pretty liberal on it if we're going to go that route. Because I, I just don't. I, it's physically impossible for them to get through and, uh,
You don't want garbage building up.
I think it's more important, and I think that for the, the few weeks that, uh, this is going to be a problem. I think with much, our residents, this is just me talking. Our residents would much rather have their garbage picked up than, than, uh, and maybe put some earplugs in during the night to try to mitigate the noise. I don't know. That's just me talking and, and I, I, that's why I'm asking you for it.
So that's the area around Willie Street?
Yeah. Well, yeah. And, and what's fed by that, you know? Having to access Willie Street and, and be able to, you know, take those arterial roads and those residential roads, that's what's causing the problem.
And then can we help make a firm end when the construction ends?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll make sure that that's.
So we don't have any like little leg after that?
I think after our last discussion with them, they, they understand. I hate to, I hate to make any variation in it, but I, I think
Oh.
to help our, our residents, I, I just think it's, we've got to do something
We need the garbage picked up.
to get the problem.
Unfortunately, this is my neighborhood again and we're the ones who are complaining about the
I was thinking about that.
That's why I'm mentioning it here today. Carol and I talked about it earlier today.
So, um, could we put out some kind of an announcement?
Yes. Well, one, if you can give me some, some feedback tomorrow.
Yeah.
Say by noon, give me some feedback. If, if, if you really have some heartburn with it and have another idea, send it to me. Otherwise we'll put out a, a press release and, and make sure people understand that.
And just to say it's for the duration
Yes.
of the construction and no longer and?
Yes.
You might want to emphasize that the duration of that construction is always until November.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a long time.
Which seems extreme, but.
It is extreme.
It's because they're going to be doing such a good job.
I'd love to see it.
It better be very thorough. No skim pudding. All right. Does anybody have any other questions? And we will move on. Lots of good questions. Uh, report from the city clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Um, the Morgantown Police Civil Service Commission will administer the police officer entry level testing on Saturday, October 28th, uh, 2023 at 9:00 AM. And that will be located at the Public Safety Building at 300 Spruce Street. An information sheet outlining the requirements for employment for Morgantown Police Department, uh, pre-employment physical agility screening information and medical certificate of fitness form can all be located on our city's website. Um, if you go to MorgantownWV.gov and search Police Department, you can find it there. Um, on the Police Department website themselves on their own and then also on the city's website. Applications are, um, can be completed online and paid online. Um, and then also we can take a, a walk-in or some, if someone would like to send it in another way. Just, uh, sharing that information to keep, um, keep fillers out.
Is there an age limit on that?
Yes.
Eighteen or is it 21?
It's eighteen.
Eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Oh. Help recruit.
Yeah, I, that, that's why I wondered. I have a, somebody I know that, but I think he's two more months. Till eighteen.
That's okay.
Okay.
Wait, October.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, one thing that I, I did want to share that the Police Civil Service Commission, um, voted on to include was, um, some resources for the tests, for the written exam. And, uh, we have seen, um, some incre, or, uh, more passing, more passing, um, candidates. So, um, anyone who does apply, we'll make sure that we get that information to them so they can, uh, take, um, it's a test that kind of simulates what they'll be taking on October 28th. And we'll give them a little bit of feedback as to how they, how they do. It will not give them the answers. But it will give them kind of an idea about what they'll be doing on October 28th. Uh, and that's, um, and there's no fee for that, for any candidate who would like to do that. So, uh, reach out to us if, um, anyone has any questions. People can, it, it's nice to know that we're getting an email or a call at least once a week and week, and that makes us feel good knowing, you know, our numbers are low right now. So, anyway.
Do email me all that, please.
Sure.
If you just email that to council?
To everybody, yeah?
Yeah.
Sure.
That way I could get it out.
Yeah. Thank you. Another update on boards and commissions, just to share that we, we do have quite a few vacancies, so I encourage folks who may be wanting to be involved in, in our city government to take a look at our Boards and Commissions website. Again, Morgantown W V dot gov under Boards and Commissions, and should be able to, to slide down onto each board or commission and get the idea about if there's vacancies, what their, what their mission is, and the things that they do, when they meet, and all those, those types of things. So again, you can apply, apply online. It's a lights-out process, and it comes right to the clerk's office, and then you all get a copy of their application as well. So, and then lastly, the third week of October each year is Municipal Government Week, and I know it's a little ways down the road, and I spoke about it last time, but we do have some good conversation going on about what we're going to do this year for Municipal Government Week, and that date actually is October sixteenth through the twentieth. So I'm still interested in any ideas that y'all may have on how we would like to celebrate and educate our folk, our, the citizens about what we do as a city government. And so, October sixteenth through the twentieth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Great report. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Recently reviewed a grant award for Robin Hest, our grants coordinator, that will designate or reallocate some CDBG C V funds to the continued improvements to the Norwood Fire Station. Worked on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the city in Bow Park, which is going to designate the new playground and amenities at the Woodburn Community Complex as part of Bow Park's park system for, for their ongoing management. Continuing to work on updates to the litter code, as well as local provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code and some related provisions of the Solid Waste Code with respect to our, our building officials, code enforcement division, enforcement of those, those litter provisions, so they can be a bit more proactive and everybody can have more certainty about what's required under those provisions. Quick update on the Marilla Pool Project, which is Bow Park's planned construction of a new marilla pool at the Marilla Park. The initial estimates had been to have a supplemental resolution finalizing the details of that project before council this month. The design lead on the project is actually still working on some design documents and construction documents, so that's delayed from its planned date that we had discussed with you earlier, but they're continuing to work on that, and we'll update you as that project goes along. I attended last week a site visit at the Flegel Reservoir discussing the fishing, swimming, non-motorized boating, and trail amenities that will be constructed at the site. This is the first time I had been out to the site, and it was really a great venue for those, for those amenities, as well as for our water service. West Virginia D N R had representatives out there who were also very excited about those And also been contacted by the city engineer proposing the opening of a public right-of-way in the third ward for pedestrian access, which I expect to be on your next council meeting agenda. That's all I have to report for this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Third ward? That's the right-of-way?
The right-of-way for tomorrow? They're working on tomorrow.
That's the right-of-way? You're talking about the?
Alleyway?
The, the walking alley?
Yeah, yeah, it starts tomorrow. Yeah, I sort of said I'd already talked to somebody earlier, but thank you.
Yeah.
Very, actually, I'm very excited about it, so.
Good work.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. So now we are to reports from council members, and Council, Deputy Mayor Abulganam, would you like to start?
Sure. I guess the easiest one to start with is our next first ward meeting is September twenty-fifth, Jack Roberts Park, six PM. So have a month planned to attend. At that meeting, we'll be discussing our plans for Halloween. The students return to school next week, so I would encourage our residents to be cognizant of the buses in time for which they leave to go to work, as the bus schedule may impact that. I would also like to say thank you to Republic. I have neighbors that put in, or sent in their sheets that they were sent, and have been getting their smaller garbage cans. That has been very much appreciated. And that is it for my summer vacation. I went back to work today, so don't mind me as I'm crying in the corner. Other than that, that's really all I have today.
Thank you. Want to plug in?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Let's start off with some interesting things. The South Park Association of Neighbors is having their annual sale this Saturday, and last count I heard is forty families that are participating, or thereabouts. So if you're looking for various items, that's a good place to come. It's always been a good and fun outing, and well-attended. At the municipal league meeting, we had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to, I think some of us also participated, had the opportunity to go through the new Wheeling Police Department facility that they were fortunate enough to, to build. It is quite impressive. It's a lot of elbow room and wonderful technology that just goes completely through the building. The interesting thing about it, that their manpower requirements are approximately the same as Morgantown. The city of Wheeling is approximately the same population, they're twenty-nine thousand, we're approximately thirty thousand, or thereabouts. And they're having the same recruiting problems, and they have the same deficit in terms of the number of vacancies that they have, almost equal to ours. I think they're down nineteen. Why do I bring this up? In the paper, there was a reference to our defense in depth, our facility, and it was wondering, speculating as to whether or not that was helping with recruiting. The, I made that same statement to, to the Police Department in Wheeling, saying their new facility, which was, again, like I said, very impressive, was that helping with their recruiting? And the answer was no. The one thing I would say is that with defense in depths that we have, I don't really know that it's gonna help with recruiting, but I do think it is a very plus, a great plus for our Police Department in terms of training. It certainly equaled what the new Wheeling had in terms of their facility, in terms of weight training and simulation. The thing they lacked in Wheeling that we have is the actual physical gun gallery, I guess how you would call it. So we have that advantage over them too. Unfortunately, I, I would very much like to incentivize, and I know it was talked about earlier, how we might distribute our monies. I, I think if it was just the idea of, well, I suppose if you, you could buy a, a police force if you wanted to, if you could afford to, just be unlimited, but on the other hand, I think that, given the circumstances that we have and the equitable idea of fair payment, we're, we're probably in as good a shape as we can be in, and certainly I would like to see any incentives that we can have, and I appreciate what you're trying to do in terms of recruiting. But I think we have a reasonably good situation here in Morgantown. The other thing I would, that came from that meeting, by the way, and I passed this along to you, was this municipal league offering of training. And we talked about that briefly, I think, among administration, particularly with Emily. It's the fundamentals for municipal leadership that they're sponsoring, and I know that one of us has already jumped in, is gonna be taking advantage of it, unfortunately at our own expense, but I think it's worth conversation. I think it's worth the idea of trying to build...
At our expense.
A knowledgeable base for municipal government. And I applaud the municipal league for doing this, and I'd like to bring that to your attention and actually have you look at it and see if there isn't some, something that we can do that might incentivize either that program or our own in terms of creating interest in municipal government. Then lastly, for me, with our, our garbage collection with Republic, I would dearly appreciate that when they empty the garbage, particularly in those large containers, on a very rainy day, if they would just simply close the lid so I didn't have to fight not only with the large garbage can, but half-full of water. And I think a lot of our other residents would appreciate that same. And it doesn't seem to me that that would be too terribly restrictive a request to make of them. And that's it.
Thank you.
See you Saturday at the sale.
What are you selling?
Council mic.
What do you want?
Make an offer.
I just wanna say that we are beginning the right-of-way tomorrow. Thank you very much, guys. And I think I got a little bit of an update today about the, the three abandoned houses, so I think we have to wait a couple more weeks on that to get some answers. And the sign will be done next Friday, so.
Congratulations.
That's all I have. I am happy about that, because it's been empty, it's been asked for, for four years, so. So they're happy with me, so that's all I have.
You're hitting the ground running.
Yeah, that's, that's what I did.
It's your turn.
Our sign has only been missing for two years, but it's being installed tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, that's been an ordeal, and we're thrilled that it's finally done and ready
to go. Supposed to be on Monday. It rained, got delayed two more days. Story of my life.
Pick a picture, send it.
As the city manager alluded, the Willie Street project, which is much needed, and people need to have patience, it is very much impacting traffic through the Woodburn neighborhood and the other adjacent neighborhoods. So the police indicated that they would be doing some extra patrolling through there. We're getting a speed camera. People should use caution, and please remember that it is a neighborhood, and I understand that traffic's made you late and you're tired of sitting, but this is a neighborhood and there could be children. I only expect it to get worse once the middle school nearby and W V are in session, so we're not looking forward to that, but we're very happy that the work is being done, so everyone be patient. A couple of upcoming events. Bow Park's Last Sounds of the Summer concert is happening on Thursday at six PM. It is the Celebrate Woodburn, so very near and dear to our neighborhood. It will be in Whitmore Park, just below the original Mario's Fishbowl. Six PM, as I said, Thursday the seventeenth. Chris Haddix, Lords of Lester, and Tim Mashburn are all playing, all musicians with ties to the Woodburn neighborhood, so we're very excited. Also approaching final concerts. We only have two Ruby Summer concerts left. Sam Bush is playing this week and Smash Mouth next week. Those are Fridays starting at seven. Hope everyone comes down to the amphitheater to see out that series. Woodburn is also having a yard sale on Saturday. It is not a super sale. I think we've got about a dozen, but we figured if people were already out for the Span super sale, maybe they would swing over to Woodburn.
Piggyback.
They'll be there, eight o'clock.
And this Saturday is also the Moonlight Market downtown in the evening at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. I was asked by the Board of Morgantown Community Resources to do a monthly update to council on some of the activities that are going on there. So just a couple of notes from some of our tenants there. The Helpful Harvest Program through the United Way distributed forty-five thousand dollars of produce to local pantries and community partners. They received a donation of about two thousand pounds of local produce. They got a large donation of clothing, which is going to be spread through other H three partners for some of the clients living there, Bartlett House, Lauren's Wish, things like that. And they wanted me to note that a longtime employee of United Way who has been running the Helpful Harvest Program named Tim Berry is moving on from Morgantown, and he's been very, he's been integral at H three through a lot of the things that have happened there, so he will definitely be missed. Wellspring is a mental health facility. They have now opened, and they have served a hundred and fifty-two separate clients in Morgantown. Bartlett House has served fifty-one clients in July. A hundred percent of those have a housing plan. Twelve people were able to be moved into more permanent housing in July, so just this year alone, the total housed from Bartlett's Triage Shelter hit ninety-three. So we're getting people into housing, which is great. The Sobering Center had a few additional intakes in July and is also finding that the Narcan vending machine is being well utilized by a lot of folks on the property and others just stopping in, which I didn't know how much that would... Sober Living got a Narcan vending machine as a pilot project through the state and chose to put it in the Sobering Center space. It's only open a few evenings a week. I wasn't sure how much access people would have, but apparently it's being used. Lauren's Wish is doing their, they've been open for most of this year, but they are having their official grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, at eleven AM, and would like to invite everyone. The only other one I received, oh, that's not true. Catholic Charities served thirty-one households through their food pantry and fourteen households in July through their utility assistance program. Salvation Army was able to serve two thousand six hundred and ninety-four meals. They had sixty-two volunteers for a total of a hundred and forty-eight hours. And they are doing, in coordination with the city, the food box giveaway. My time on that varies a little from yours. I have Saturday, August nineteenth, from eleven to two PM.
Robin told me ten. It may be the organization of getting folks down there and getting people set up.
That could be. The graphic that I was sent today to put out said eleven to two, so.
Probably for those to pick up, maybe.
Yeah, could be.
I'll find out, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay. I feel like there was some, oh, and at MCR, we are working very hard to get the dayroom that the city and the county paid for usable. Right now, it is open on Thursday and Friday afternoons for laundry, and we are looking at ways to get that open for shower access, and I think I'm gonna be up there volunteering on Friday for some scheduled showers. They need a couple of extra sets of eyes to be able to, to maintain the... showers. They need a couple of extra sets of eyes to be able to, to maintain those and make sure everyone is safe, so.
If you need help, I'm available.
Okay. Hopefully in the, in the next week or two, we're, we have a schedule for, for showers. The only other thing I wanted to mention was I appreciate firefighter Anthony Stake coming before the body and making us aware of what they still perceive to be some issues with the personnel policies and how they're affecting. It is difficult for an employee to come before this body and management and say that they feel that they're not being treated fairly. It's, it's an ongoing conversation that we keep hearing from a lot of our civil service employees. And I pulled up, I shared with assistant manager Mozzarelli yesterday, sometime this week, a graphic that I was sent from, I, I grew up in the Wheeling area, so I have a friend who's on the police force there. And they did recently just increase their salary a few thousand dollars for starting officers, which now exceeds ours, and they are offering a twenty thousand dollar sign on bonus if you are a certified West Virginia officer. So they are working on things. I don't know how much that will help, but these are the kinds of things that other, other municipalities are doing. And I appreciate what you're saying, Councilor Queque, when you say like, things aren't that bad here, but I don't, I don't think that's what we're consistently hearing from our employees, and I do think we need to, to be willing to listen to our employees. Councilor Michael asked for a session to discuss personnel policies, and that has not yet hit an agenda, so I'm just again saying I'm in support of having a work session or an executive session to discuss personnel, personnel issues. And again, requesting a charter review subcommittee to look at some election information and other, other items that are laid out in our charter. That concludes my report.
I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask to our city leadership, and it, it has come to me a few times, just people trying to figure out what the rate of the amphitheater is to rent and what the percent of revenue raise. So there's a set fee for the rental, and then if there's a ticket price or something, what percent of that is owed to the city? And if there's two rates, if there's one for a nonprofit versus one for a for-profit? So it, it would just be helpful to have that information to share when, when approached and, and when serving on other commission boards and we're looking at a fundraiser, you know, what the cost of that is.
If you could send that to everybody.
I have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ten percent, though, is the
Is, is it, is there a difference between nonprofit and profit?
Yeah.
There is, okay.
Different.
Okay. And then I've also had a chance to meet and talk with some area stakeholders around the downtown area, and I know our assistant city manager has been involved in this to a degree, but the knotweed, Japanese invasive knotweed, that is just overtaking Deckers Creek and the entrance from that, from, you know, not far from Morella down into the amphitheater, and just wondering if we've had a chance to look at our All-Star ecology and treating that this fall, which is apparently the best time to do it.
Our urban landscape director was reaching out to several landscape firms that would be the best at seeing how to try to tackle that, but even with that, it will be, it doesn't go away.
Doesn't go away, but
But yes, they're
I've never seen it as bad as it is right now. They can really hide encampments and make people feel unsafe. And then going back to city manager's comment about Republic, I mean, if they need to come early, they need to come early. I, I certainly would support that, and I think my neighbors would too. But what I will ask is that to me, for the last couple of weeks, at least from my experience, they're not emptying the totter, at least, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, they're reaching and grabbing what they can grab and tossing it into the truck.
They're not emptying the whole thing. That's the way it's done.
And, and that used to happen, and I used to have to tie my trash bags together so they couldn't do that. And I don't want to do it with these big totters, but if they're not going to dump them, why do we have these big totters with a bar in the front? So that, that's my ask.
Great.
The
Empty the trash.
And so some of you may have heard that Star City was considering giving up ownership of the trailhead off of Van Boris, and they've decided to keep that. So it's going to stay into Star City's ownership, but they're asking M R T C, the rail trail, to take on all the maintenance, which is a little bit more, we already, M R T C maintains a bathroom and cleaning of that, but the mowing is the, the big new ask. So M R T has to figure out how to come up with, with the mowing. So anyways, at least it's staying in, in place. And the last thing is South Hills Block Party is September tenth. It's our annual block party, which is a Sunday, and it's roughly from four to seven. I'll get the particulars out soon, but that's always a fun event, again, September tenth, from approximately four to seven. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a few events I can go over. So this Thursday on the seventeenth, we will have a Suncrest Block Party. It got delayed last time for a very severe storm that I think turned out not to be a storm at all, but it was forecast to be a severe storm. But they'll be doing a, I believe, turtle, yeah, Turtle Park dedication at five-thirty and then food at six. Chris Glock will be grilling for us, so it's going to be good. On August twenty-third, Planned Parenthood will have an event at Stone Tower Brews at seven P M. to meet the new Ixia, essentially, down there for their community organizers. So if you can make it, that'd be great. I was going to mention the Moonlight Market, but Councilor Trumpel already mentioned that. And then on August twenty-fifth, I don't see a time here, there will be an event for Camping with, Camping for Canines with a goal to raise ten thousand dollars for Animal Friends of North Central West Virginia. I think that covers my events. In terms of commentary, I guess, I just wanted to express, over the weekend, we kind of got a preview of cuts that W V U is looking to make to their programs. And it's very concerning for a lot of people in the community. I think that was kind of the conversation that happened over the weekend, at least in, in my circles and the people that I know. And, and those kind of, the, the ways in which those cuts are going about, I think are very concerning for our community. And, you know, we, we want to be good partners with W V U, and I want to make sure that they, I know that they're struggling right now, and I hope that they realize that like, they've been, like, many, many, many people at W V U have been essential partners with the city, with like, me personally, and, and I'm sure everybody here, and, and some people are employed here. So like, you know, it's, you know, we're, we're inexorably tied to the fate of W V U, and I just hope that we find a better path forward than the kind of cuts that we were seeing proposed. I want to thank Councilor Harshberger for looking into a couple of issues that we had with, with MUB, and I think that the kind of turnaround time and the response time that we had on some of those issues is kind of a testament to how good of an idea, I guess it was, to put a, a member of council on that board and to have that direct line of communication. I don't know if this has been brought to city management's attention, but there did appear to be some kind of issue, I'm no engineer, so some kind of issue with erosion control in terms of the construction that's happening near Heritage Place, that has caused, I guess, some fairly significant issues for residents around that area. I believe MUB has it in hand and has it under control and has been speaking with the developers there, but I did want to make you guys aware if you weren't, and the public aware if they weren't. But yeah, that's all I had for tonight. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate everyone's hard work and mention of community activities. There's an M N P O meeting at the exact same time as the Suncrest Neighbor Association. So I will be hoping for well-educated and crafted votes done quickly, so I can come back to the picnic.
Busy Thursday.
Really busy Thursday.
Unusually a busy Thursday.
I think about every neighborhood has something on that Thursday.
I'll zoom you in on an iPad. I'll zoom you in on an iPad and carry you around.
Well, I'll probably be there right at five-thirty, and then I'll leave, and then, but anyway, we will, we will figure, we will figure it out. Appreciate all of the public comments and people who are willing to come and stick their neck out, as it were, and, and talk about what they are concerned about, and the same with council members. We don't always say the most popular things, and it's important that all of our voices are heard. And I guess I wanted to mention a couple of, I went to the Botanic Garden, had a, a garden party, and it was on Sunday, and it was a well-attended and well, well-done event. And it was neat because there were so many different ages. I've noticed all throughout Morgantown how often ages, ages mix. And so I just appreciated that I sat at a table with young couple that were just starting their respective businesses, and then some retirees, and I, I just really appreciate when we can learn from each other and have good conversation with people of all different ages. I would include all of the other types of differences, such as nationality and sexual orientation and any other kinds of, kinds of differences, but I think sometimes we forget age as something where you're really spanning the divide of, from all of those different perspectives and figuring out how we can all, for instance, one of the persons at the table had just opened a hair cutting salon, and it was in a place, the actual location inside the city limits was a place where a lot of the other people at the table had gotten their hair cut previously for years and years, didn't realize there was a new business in that spot, figured out now where they could go back to the same location and get their hair cut from this fellow that had renovated the place and brought it back to life. So that kind of idea of renewal is very important, I think, in Morgantown. And to bolster up, probably Butcher's comments about what W V U is going through, I think it's really complicated and difficult, and I think sometimes we forget how interwoven our community is with W V U and the different programs that we partner with at W V U. And so the way that this is working out is definitely going to be difficult for everyone concerned. So I hope that we can help in any way we can to make it the best transition it can. Right now it looks really difficult, so. I think that's it for me. Thank you very much, and let's move into our executive session.
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A four two nine to discuss acquisitions and/or development of real estate in the fifth ward and sixth ward.
Second.
Thanks. Favor to executive session. All right.